Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is being recorded and will be uploaded to the Good Old Town Council YouTube page. The aim is that decision making should be transparent within the public domain, which will involve more of our community and local democracy. By being in this council chamber, you are consenting to being recorded and for your image to be added to YouTube. The images and sound don't use for training purposes. Any views expressed are the speaker's own and do not necessarily reflect the view of Good Old Town Council. Please view the guidance on recording in public meetings policy if you need more information.
Well, thank you very much for that, Sarah. Item 79, which is public participation. We've got the Staffordshire Police followed by the Staffordshire. Oh, sorry, we've got Gemma first of all. Good watch. Hey, we've got Gemma, followed by the Staffordshire Police, and then we've Stafford County Council. So, Gemma, all is yours.
Don't look.
Okay.
Hello, sorry about that. I'm the Waste Minisation Project Support Officer of SASS County Council. It was a new role that was brought in in September. It hasn't been done before. So basically, I look at the waste that comes into the HWRC sites. So, the House of Waste Recycling Centre, the TIP, not allowed to say the TIP, but we'll go with the TIP, depending on what it is. And look at what comes in and try and make reuse of the items rather than it going to the incinerator or to landfill. The new schemes that have come in since I've started, the tech cycle, I don't know if anybody's heard of any of these schemes. Hopefully you have, but if not, I'll do a bit more. Tech cycle is where old laptops and hard drives, towers, mice, keyboards, anything to do with computing can be taken to the TIP. If it can be repaired, it can be repaired and get back out into the community. We work with Free IT Stafford, who they destroy all hard drives, so that eliminates the doubt with regards to data. And people can apply to them. We work with the Children's Hospital, Social Services, or just somebody who needs a laptop and they can't afford one. So they can apply to them, not across the county, if they're based in Stafford, they work with everybody who needs one. If items can't be repaired, they go to recycling with Trebley For. They're a charity based in Newcastle and Stoke. They literally repair, recycle every component. They work with people who have mental health illness and learning difficulties. And they literally sit with sort of tweezers and take every single bit out and recycle as much as possible. So that's on every side, certainly at Beddell's and every side. We've also started New Woman Grace Cares. They are a charity based in Lichfield. They repair plants and get back into circulation. Any medical care equipment, brooches, shower seats, wheelchairs, that's anything possible. We work with the NHS, we set them up with Royal Stoke. And because if you're given a pair of brooches, you sort of give them to them and they're not, there's no what you do afterwards. And we get so much back into the TIPs and it's like, there's nothing wrong with it. But charities can't sell them if they've got the code on to say they come from the NHS. But because Grace Cares works with them, they're able to get them back into the system. They gift the items or they sell items for sort of a third of the cost if they can do that to put back into the system. They also work with the carers. They do sort of the community days, parties and whatnot to try and help the carers. So that's where the money from the proceeds go. We've done work with the Prince's Trust in Stafford. They're interested in how can we help with their teen challenges and whatnot. So they did it last week actually in Stafford. They went to the TIP. On every side, there's a charity container. It's under contract at the moment with Catherine House Hospice. They come, they take the items they can sell, but they leave a lot behind. So I've been, before I was in place, they used to just carry the items they didn't want, put it into bulky waste and it went to the incinerator. There was nothing wrong with the items, they just couldn't sell them because they were out of date, old wooden furniture, the dark wood. They can't sell it, so they just literally carried it over. So we put a stop to that and I'm working with different charities at every TIP to say, so these are the items we've got left. Do you know anybody who can use them? So Stafford is working really well. They've got a massive community network. The Hearts and Hands Club, they take the items and they distribute to anybody that they know. They also, if they haven't got anything for an item, they put it on their WhatsApp group, they've got a community WhatsApp group and somebody can always make use of something. So the Prince's Trust have been going and taking all of these items, the items that Catherine House didn't want, they couldn't make use of. They generally don't take children's toys, baby equipment. So they, the swap shop is as they let them set up a table. They do the swap shop, people can take an item, just bring them an item of food back. Got two full trolley, which they then took to the two food banks in Stafford. That would work really well in any town, so it's a really good example. They don't actually reuse it, it's just what I've just said. It's literally trying to find homes for anything that comes onto the sites. Small wee prisons is a scheme where toasters, kettles, hair dryers, we dropped off. People, people bring so much to the TIP, it's still working. And they're like, we just have an upgrade, we just changed our colours. So there's a container on, at the moment, only two sites because we've got issues with the prisons collecting, but we're working with that. The items get taken to a prison. The prisoners are trained in pat testing and cleaning them up. They clean them up, they pat test if they work, they go to survive and survive and sell them. So it's a really good circular economy. They don't work, they just bring them back to us and they go through the small wee system. These are some of the community versions that we've made so far. That one was a sort of baby bank in Community Group in Beddell's. They approached me, they were doing a pamper night and said, how can we help? And I was like, well, don't do hair and beauty, so not really much I can do. But they have a bra bank, so we set up a bra bank just in our SP1 building. Over four weeks, we collected 11 boxes of bags of bras, just a ridiculous amount, just from a four week campaign. And so we've carried that on. We are extending the bra banks into all the libraries. It's an ideal place to have them there. Parts and Hands is the charity I was just talking about. We did a toy collection for Christmas for them internally and we've got so many toys. We then were invited to take the toys and the food hampers to the people within Stafford who needed the items. Parts and Hands are great because they they work with, they sort of focus on working people rather than people on benefits and whatnot. They'll help anybody, but they focus on working people because they're the people who are sort of in that, they can't get the benefits because they earn too much. But they can't afford, they can pay all the bills and whatnot, but they can't afford sort of the presents and the extras in life. So we had so many sort of heartbreaking stories when we went to deliver the items. People sort of at university, financial breakdown, can't pay the bills, got them placed for their children. But just because they're trying to better themselves, so we work with those. I could show you the free decoration every Christmas where the volunteer went to decorate and train. We just all sort of recycle and take things that we're trying to do, just to sort of spread our message. These are the ones that are coming in over the next sort of three months, Community Group Paint. It happens in Stoke at the moment, so for a person in Hanford, they've already got the scheme running. So we're going to have it on every side. There'll be a shed when people donate their paints. It'll be sort of assessed, is it passable, is it useful? You can go in and anybody can come and take it away. So paint is one of the biggest costs that we have. We spend about £90,000 a year disposing of paint and a lot of that is brand new folk. And because it's bought to us, we have to dispose of it. But with this scheme, we can pop it in there and anybody can come and take it to residents, community groups. If it's a community group that needs to do a large area, they can apply to do lots and they'll give them as much paint as they need. Repair and donation, we get so many bikes to site. Nothing wrong with them, outgrown, sat in the shed for a couple of years. So we're working with different repair schemes around the county to do the safety checks and then get them back out. Whether it's to children who never had a bike because they can't afford cycle proficiency, working people who can't get to work, who haven't got a mode of transport. And so that will be starting from every side. And the repair process is great because we've already got that network of people that have got the skills. The men's sheds are also fantastic for that. So I'm trying to speak to as many sort of people as possible to get that network that can we drop you off a pack of bikes? Do you know anybody in the local area that needs them and working with the local community? So it'll be based from here, it'll be the Biddle side. And so somebody from Biddle drops off a bike, somebody in Biddle is making use of it and trying to make it more community based. And the integrated boards on every side. We have, I've spent a lot of time over the last couple of months at the sites, talking to the staff. They know, they see what happens on a day to day basis. I can sit and look at the data, but it doesn't actually show what happens on site. We get a number of people on a weekly at every side, but they get the same people who will drop off a couple of bottles or bit of rubbish and bring their sandwiches and sit and have a chat with the site staff because they know it's the same people. Like, has it gone this way? And is next item happened, you know? Because it's like a safe space. So we're getting the notice cards up so we can signpost to the warm places or this group runs on this day. Did you know that this happens in your local community? Just because we get the football, we've got the audience that might use it rather than just it being all rubbish. But the volunteers scheme launching on the first of March, that's what we've signed off. So looking for volunteers to attend events and things like this, but also spend some time on the tips. So talking to the residents, do you know about these schemes? Did you know this happens? Did you know that this happens to you? Way, just getting a bit more knowledge out of that, so that will be coming in. And this is just over the last, I've been using the Waste Abi Staffordshire Facebook page. Since about November, I was granted permission and the reach has increased massively. This is the QR code if anyone wants to access it. But yeah, that's where I can get the message out. I can't get it out on staff, the county council page is just too big, it's for everybody. So this is specific for what I'm actually trying to bring in and get the knowledge out of and share with, hope it will go on on all the different town councils, all the different community groups. Just trying to get more knowledge out there so that residents are aware of what's happening. Yeah, so that's everything I'm trying to be at the moment.
Thank you very much for that, Gemma. It's very important, very valuable, in fact. Hello, councillor Jones, you want to come in?
Thank you, Mr. May. Yeah, thank you, Gem, for coming. I was sort of aware of some of this, but you've explained it really well. I'm really pleased to see about the medical stuff. Not just got smacked me, you could forgive a pair of brooches for a month and then we don't want them back.
Yeah, £500 baby.
That's fantastic. And I just wanted to just be clear for people watching this. Basically, if you've got something down and the charity shops don't want it, you can take it to Bemisley, you can take it to the TIP and they'll sort it out, so there's no need for anything. And presumably when you get there, somebody will say, don't sell that, it's skipped, that can go over there.
Yeah, so that's one of the biggest things we've done is educate the site staff because they know what Catherine House will take. And they got into the habit of, oh, they don't take dark wood, so pop it into the wood or they don't take this. So now it's safe, everything, I will find a home for it.
Because there is a lot of stuff that the charity shops won't take, they won't take electrical stuff for a start. Some furniture that they won't take as well.
Yeah, they can't take anything if it hasn't got the safety label, just put a safety on it.
Yes.
Car seats, mattresses, they're the only ones that we don't.
Pretty much, if you've got something you don't want, take it to Bemisley.
Yeah, take it, make one trip to the, to the TIP, take your parity bits and buggies, record brass. So working with resettlement teams, so if somebody is emergency moved, they can come and take sort of crockery and coffee tables, you know, so people have given the accommodation, but they've got nothing else. You can work with the youth groups that are helping those and making comments and get as much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. May.
Councillor Jones. Yeah, thank you, Sir. Yeah, it seems in quite a short time, you've got quite a few things on the boil as it were. I was particularly interested in the paint recycling thing because it's something I was in town council nine months ago, but on another issue. And I think that's something that really is a tip. Is that a plant somewhere where the paint's cleaned, pinned and all? It's just a tin?
It's just a tin, yeah, so it's on a sort of, honestly, basically, it's not what.
There are schemes where the paint has actually run through a machine and it's cleaned and felted and all that.
I like that it's something, but yeah, not at the moment.
Secondly, councillor Smith, actually, it's her initiative, not mine, I've told you on a toes here, I think. Well, we've got aspirations of the town council to set up a tool, I believe. And the link with the prison thing with repaired tools, I can see that that would really cut down some of our costs of actually getting that up and running. So that's something I think we should really explore. And thanks for the presentation.
Councillor, sorry. Yeah, thank you very much. Yes, thank you. As somebody who frequently visits the House of Waste environment, it's actually very closely. It always does shock me when I go up and put something into the bulky waste, how many things there which are obviously unusable. So I think in some respects, it's a fast learning curve. It's all about getting information out of, if not educating to do. I think the mindset's got to, somehow we've got to get across the mindset that when people would go to the recycling centre, they are categorised in the room of mind what they think is good stuff and what they think is, I think there's too much sort of mix which requires separation.
Yeah, I think it's understanding that it might be rubbish to you, but it's really good to somebody else.
I honestly think that a lot will take stuff off the TIP with a sort of sad thought thinking, hmm, it's a shame that this is pumped to the end and it's useful now for me. But I can't honestly see what else I can do with it. So I don't think there is always that perception that it's taking, obviously. I think the perception that it's something with a heavy heart, thinking, it'd be better if somebody else could make a piece of it so it speaks out of that. It's really important what you're doing, but getting that information out there is absolutely key to start.
Definitely.
Councillor Rogers?
Yes, thank you. You don't know, I work at the Euronics Centre in the town. And as trade, we can't go to TIP, but we have a lot of recycling that needs to be done. And we have to pay a lot of times to get rid of it.
Right, what type of electronics?
Any chance you're interested in anything like that? Thank you.
What type of electronics devices that you?
Anything that's in the house, white goods, brown goods, everything. We recycle, well, we try to recycle, but we can't go to Bemisley TIP because of trade. It costs us the disposal.
So it's at your personal items or?
No, 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 the Euronics Centre in the town, it's the electrical shop.
Electrical shop, yeah.
Everything that we sell, we normally bring back the faulty items.
Okay, now I understand you. So your faulty items, I can put you in touch with Trebley For because they don't just do items, they do everything. But I bought them in on the basis of the IT because we've got the small wee scheme. So we don't need to use them for the small wee items, but they take all small wee items. They're a fantastic charity that are consent to the detail and they would.
Sure, sure, thank you.
We've done that across the county that we've set them up with, they'll come to Biddle, but they'll come to yourself. So they're making one trip, one town and letting them to different charities. We get charities who try and bring items to the TIP of electricals that they have pat tested, but they failed. And they all know good to anybody now, so they are collecting from them.
Is there any councillors, any other question you'd like to ask?
Just a point, you're talking about the computers. And now potentially people are taking them in, you're sort of saying, I will clean the hard drives. I mean, the thing is, are you a family with computers or potentially the trust in terms of actually cleaning the hard drive? Now, I'm doing that, I take the hard drive out, which I think a lot of people do. Now, what do you do in terms of repair? Put a new hard drive?
Yeah, so in any, whether it's repaired or recycled, the hard drives are destroyed.
Yeah.
The machine that literally destroys them will get a certificate of destruction and new hard drives put in. So Free IT Stafford have got volunteers and donors who pay for new hard drives. So anything that can be repaired has a new hard drive in it.
I know, a couple of years ago, one of the old schools used to get rid of their computers.
Yeah.
You know, it's available, basically. I mean, in general, I don't want to do that, I don't use it at all. Every so many years, yes.
Yeah, so they, Free IT Stafford and Trebley For, they've worked with a lot of schools. There's also donated, which is a Stafford County Council based scheme, which again takes laptops in and repairs them and gets them back out. But because most of the equipment that we get is unusable, it couldn't sort of work alongside us, which is why we started up this one as well. But yeah, there's plenty of options, but any schools, they are very happy to have and do the necessary.
Very slick, all the recycling, we can reach the end of that. All we do, all we do. Any questions then, ladies? Right, Gem, I was, thank you for saying this, you had a lovely presentation.
Thank you.
I'll comment if anything else is up and running.
Chris's school.
Yeah.
He was from upside. You're right, he's coming.
And we continue to work with people who are causing issues. And obviously with the company like Tainsbury's, who are having issues caused in their premises. Borders and injunctions have been an issue to people involved and from going to certain areas, hanging around with certain individuals that they tend to cause issues with. And we've also had a number of arrests for theft of bicycles and motorcycles over the past few months, which have been going on in and around Biddle, Naftersley or the others that have been from Biddle. And also in the last month, we've made an arrest for serious violent offence in Biddle where weapons have been used. And then that was, that person being imprisoned. And so for us, as the police at the minute, we've got quite a few positive from carrying on. And what we do is still approach everyone and all wards to contact us if you have any issues so we can highlight it. If we're having an issue in a certain area to target and track it, if you have anything going for us.
Two councillors, they put their hands up from three. Jill, you first. Sorry, councillor Salt.
Thank you. You might not be able to say anything about this publicly, but I've had a few complaints about Duke Street and the Dost House, for want of a better phrase.
Yeah.
Can you update us on what's happening now or?
I can, I'll chat with you in a minute. I've got two minutes, I'll be right back.
Thank you.
Councillor Brownwell?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. May. I've been made aware of a couple of issues on Biddle Valley Way. So Timbridge, Newport Road, drug taking, drinking there. And further south towards Brownleys, the path joins with the Village Green, same sort of issues there, but I think different, different, different characters.
Yeah.
So perhaps something to keep an eye on.
Yeah. Is there any specific plan for that?
I know, it's just seemed pretty random, really.
Councillor Jones and Councillor Jackson, and then councillor.
Yeah, complete, Mr. May. We're down again. A word of congratulations first. I am not probably going to make myself very popular with some people in Beddell's Mall, but hooray, somebody got ticket for obstructing the payments outside the post office. It caused mayhem with the Facebook page, it went mad. I've lived up here 45 years and I wanted two others to be booked, I think, for obstructing payments. And I know parking on a payment per se is not illegal, but parking on a payment according to blockages, which is what I've been banging on about for a while. I think this particular one was probably blocking a disabled crossing. So, well done for that, more power to you, whoever did, it could be my congratulations. And, you know, let's have some more because it is a real problem. Who sympathise with people that live at 40 yards because they've always parked in the same spot? But if you're blocking a payment, particularly blocking a disabled then I think you should get a technical defender. I think it's still a trick, because the number people have said, oh, I'll be careful next time. Exactly what we wanted. A couple of questions. There was an incident, I think, on the 7th of February on Beddell Mall. I think it was, it was driven close or Trendly Drive or Farm Side, I can't remember. Some lads in the middle of the night were caught on doorbell cameras, apparently trying to scan keys, the inch car. I think it was, it was one of the roads up, Rigid Road anyway. Be interesting to see what's, what's happened with that, probably not a lot because it's difficult. The doorbell are clobbered up, I'm going to have to see them. And I think, I don't know if it's Friday or Saturday this last weekend, we had a window broken in New Street next to the pub. Somebody, I suspect, was a bit juiced up in the middle of the road on the schedule, midnight and after. I was told it had been reported, I'd be interested to know if it had and what's happened. And it ended up with a broken window and that's, that's one of the problems with Beddell Mall. But I believe, and I don't know, perhaps you can enlighten us, at the same time, there was something big time kicking off in Beddell Park at the same night, so.
Was that when there was numerous cars out on the street, at the early hours?
Yeah.
Oh, it's an isolated incident, it's a property.
Yeah. It's not, this was at the same time, so I don't know if it was connected.
No, it's not connected, it's not anything to be concerned of or general public, what the incident was going on down in the R Street. It was just something within a private dwelling.
Okay. I think, I think the sad thing for me was that the people saw this going on in the road and was carrying on and shouting and one thing and the other. And actually there's a window broken. And they're all, no, 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 and said, is he still there? Said, no, he's gone. Usual story, well, it's not crime and progress, dial 101.
Yeah.
You know, and then, you know, it was two hours getting through. So, you know, and it's not your fault.
I understand.
You're reading that all the time, I'm sure. So, but it'd be interesting to know what, what came out of that, if I can be told.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll check. I've got the details, I'll pick up your email.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councillor Jackson?
Yeah, I've been banging on about getting contact details for a little while now. We have them this afternoon. What surprised me was there was only three. Is that, are we saying that is our contingent, the PCSOs in Biddle for three?
So we have six, but there's three that are specifically put to Biddle. And then the other three, which are, so we have two on each shift. So the other person on each shift, so the other three are aligned with Enden and Brown Edge. And but saying that, it's not quite, it's in the area, so they do help out on Biddle. So it's not like we've only got the one, but with them not being allocated to Biddle per se, you've got that one point of contact per shift.
All right, yeah. But from, from my point of view, if I've got a list of three and you're all off duty, which will happen, holidays, I understand that. It would be useful to pass, if it's something that I need to pass on fairly quickly, that I could pass on to one of the other officers. So would it be possible to get the contact details of those other officers who were linked to Brown Edge, but sometimes in Biddle or whatever?
It's probably possible. It's kind of like saying, if you're saying it's something quite urgent, it's pushed for a perfect 101 or so, I don't know, do you mean like reporting a crime or?
I've grown a beard in the time I've been hanging on at 101, quite frankly. Sometimes you just see something.
Yeah, yeah.
And it would be dead handy to get hold of one of our local police enforcement team to say, this is going on.
Yeah, I agree with you, yeah.
Because if I, you know, if I could, if somebody would answer the phone, I rang it, you're aware of it, if someone's available.
If someone's available, they could go and have a quick loop, whatever it might be. But to go through the one oh one system, quite frankly, there's something that's happening now, and I'm not talking major stuff, I'm not talking ninety nine nights. Talking a bit of vandalism, perhaps, that's going on, but antisocial behaviour that's going on. And if we can get, um, a police presence quickly to that. And I, I, yeah, I fully realise it's not gonna, you know, it's not gonna, you know, we haven't got twenty four hour, seven day a week coverage, I fully understand that. However, it would be, I think, from councillors, sometimes we are the eyes and ears, people come with complaints to us. Just to have a conversation with the PCSO, this is happening. You know, could you look at it?
Yeah.
And that, to me, is a far better, far better system than trying to go through one oh one.
Now, I would, so, absolutely, it's all right, perhaps the other areas, yes, I would. But there should always be at least one on, on a time, and if you're remembering that number, because there's Tuesday day on. So there's one on day shift, one on day shift, but they cross over the Friday about four, four to six hours, spending on shift. So we will, so we're not all, like, so we start at eight, we finish at six, and then the shift coming at five, so there's two people in, three people out, but. So, and we.
That's not seven days a week, that was, it can't be.
Yes, yeah.
Seven days a week.
Yeah, because we've got three shifts, so there's one shift on day shift, one shift on day shift, one for days off. And then, when that shift on day off comes back in, one of the shipping on day off, there's always someone on day, always someone on news, every day. Often someone takes leave.
Holidays, yeah.
Which is, of course, yeah.
Okay, well, thanks very much for that, but if we could possibly get the other number, it would be happy. Thank you.
Councillor Yates, followed by councillor Ollie.
Yeah, something new, which has just been reported to me over the last couple of weeks, and something I've witnessed, uh, myself, certainly the evidence of it. There's a fire setting, uh, within a different place in the town. Uh, I'd have reported one on the Biddle Valley Way, on the tarmac section, just off, uh, New Pool Road, which we've not particularly had before. Somebody's made a campfire within the actual, uh, tarmac section of the railway. And quite a few number of reoccurring instances down on the paddock behind, uh, Sainsbury's petrol station.
Yeah, I've had them reported to me.
Yeah, absolutely, but it seems to be getting a bit of a trend, and also I've had reported to me, as it happens later this afternoon. That two of the outer sleeves of the round, of the round wastepaper bins. One off the, uh, Victoria Gardens, opposite the Victoria Centre, and one down at the bottom of Craigside by the Pocket Park. Have been taken off and have been used to actually create a fire inside them. So, you know, I, I think that's the kind of thing which really wants nipping in the bud before some real damage is caused. I mean, there's two litter bins which have obviously got to, uh, resolve the issues off on that. And then something completely different, and we really are struggling to get a resolution of, of this. Is that a long vehicle transporting trailer has appeared on Lotus Avenue. Uh, Lotus Avenue, Enden Drive, Mansfield Drive. Um, and it's causing an awful lot of distress to quite a few elderly residents, who are, as a consequence, struggling to get out of the drives.
Yeah.
Uh, because it's parking very close to drives, if not actually overdrives, but also on pavements, and I've had quite a few photographs sent through to me. And I think that level of obstruction is actually a police matter. So I'm not looking for something completely draconian, but if we can identify, speak, give friendly advice and. Really, it's, it's not the appropriate type of estate for long term parking of that kind of vehicle with the access problems and the sharp ends and things. If you can have a go at it, we've got this fire set, these.
Huge amount of trouble, sadly, so, yeah.
Lotus Avenue, yes.
Um, with fires, the ones that had to be around Sainsbury's, the offenders have been. But to, and we've identified from, because I think, yeah, CCTV took it taken, and then we caught them with the X Allen, shall we say, in their bikes. And they've been, uh, shot at too.
That's very much a new thing, I haven't come across that for a long time. Yeah, good.
Councillor Ollie.
Mr. Matt, yeah, I'm sort of basically coming at the, uh, booking of the people on Biddlemore, slightly from a different angle.
It was you, wasn't it?
I think to be going a bit over the top, I think a bit of warning would have been sufficient. A bit of telling, with a far more serious issues going on in Biddlemore, people blocking the sort of those sort of things, such as speeding through the village. Basically, people who are actually blocking pavements totally, you can park on the pavement as long as you leave sufficient room to get through. But there are people who are blocking pavements and not allowing to, they're getting away with that, nobody's actually picking that up. And I think really you need to sort of look at, besides picking people up for that sort of thing, there's more serious aspects. And I think then you probably get more appreciation than actually doing somebody for, like, just parking across something for five minutes. And I think really that needs to be taken into account.
I'm not sure, a hundred percent sure if it's actually an offer of issued tickets, because, um, we don't tend to issue tickets to block pavements. We remove the vehicle and it gets taken to a compound, because it's after an unnecessary obstruction, um, back to the pavement. And so I'd have to double check and find by on that one, who, who's issued the tickets, so it's accountable, wise, and. If they are, but they're blocking the pavements, like I say, they will usually get towed, picked up, uh, or spoken to, advised. You need to move it, if they refuse, then it will get taken. With the speed, we need to, we, I know we've spoken about it before in meetings. We need to set up a form of community speed watch, um, because without. Any speed van, I'm not saying they can't do it, but I say, without a speed van or speed cameras, it's very difficult to prove. Speed of a vehicle by seeing it, I'm actually following it in a vehicle with a calibrated speedometer. And you can say, yeah, I'm doing thirty, I'm doing way over that, or doing the same speed as them. And then I think probably presence being in and around Biddlemore. At times when the speeding police vehicles themselves are out and about, or have disclosed it as well, which is something we can take back and. Um, work on, probably a bit more harnessability up in Biddlemore, um, on the, on the main drag where it will be. I don't, I don't know where you're referring to, um, to, from what we take back in transport.
No, thank you, that, the only common tanks pick up on that one is, you know, if you didn't block the pavements, then the bodies could concentrate on speeding motorists. You know, which is it. Uh, right, councillor Jones.
Quickly, thank you, Mr. Matt, but I'm just figuring, I, I just wanted to say, I wasn't belieffully saying somebody had a ticket. I'm pleased, because it's, I hoped it was the start of a campaign to sort out the overall. Uh, obstruction problem, and it is bad, and I, you know, as I said, I know parking on a pavement per se isn't illegal. But you can't out get past with pushchair and prams and stuff, and, and, and mobility scooters, a lot of places. I hoped it was the start of somebody finally taking up, it's not for warning, you think, people have warnings, David, time and time and time and time again. Somebody takes any notice, I'd say, yeah, I've done the trick, because everybody's saying now, oh, I'm not going to park, I'll be careful where I park. And that's exactly what you need to do.
So, we previously passed it on to the authorities who do tend to take on pavements, which is probably, they picked it up and then I'm giving the tickets. Uh, we do ask people to have a chance, depending on the parking, on how disruptive it is. And our usual general rule for on pavements is, if you do, if you do have to park a pavement changed since. A lot of how you've developed and streets are narrow and met more cars, leaving a room for mobility scooter, pushchair, wheelchair.
Is that what you're saying?
Um, and don't walk any drop curbs, driveways, accesses to shops, that kind of thing like that.
There's one last question, which is myself, is that last meeting, I wasn't present. But from the minutes, it was mentioned there that about parking outside schools. Which has been going on ever since I've been a councillor and ever since other councillors have been councillors. Um, but the advice given was to, um, apply for funding. Yeah, what in God's name are the police doing? Is my question, not you personally, but I. If I'm reading it right.
So, sorry.
Yeah, go on.
I think we were talking about those, the.
Yeah, I'm guessing that might have been Sarah, Sarah or Georgie, I think Georgie.
Yeah, believe it or not, I mean.
Yeah, so, I think, I don't know if she's referring that we're going to apply for funding.
No, no, she, she's talking about positioning signs that can be placed outside schools to deter park.
Yeah, but she specifically refers to funding.
I know, but you need to, you need to fund those signs.
Yeah, and you funds them, you know.
It's a, it's a grant that we, they get supplied for, so we, what, I think what they've done in Brown Edge. Um, is they apply for grants, either through some police crime commission, so it's something like that, where they pay a certain amount of pounds. They see these, they basically chill them, dress up the police as cars, and they get put on, on the, on the edge of the road. Paying to stop cars, parking, something like that, a bit more appealing, blah, blah, shall we say.
Yeah. Pat's no comments. Charlie, sorry, councillor Smith.
Yes, Matt, um, just on that funding, um, we had a presentation by, uh, Ben Adams. And he did say it's quite a significant amount of funding in this pot, so if you'd like some little children holding speed signs. That'll be where you'll get your funding.
Thank you for that, councillor. Anyone else before we call time on this? Right, thank you very much, thank you very much for that, Geoff, the gentleman, it was. Uh, right, the next speaker, councillor Keith, councillor Keith, thank you. Please keep it brief.
Okay, I'll just fifteen minutes, I think, my brother.
No, thank you, Matt, yeah.
Um, so I wanted to say thanks to Gemma, Gemma, I know she's not here anymore, but some of that stuff is very interesting. And I hope we can push on with some of those ideas, and councillor and beyond. Um, in terms of, uh, buddies, as they're called, which is what we put outside schools. Um, that is something that we have done on various, there's two or three schools in my division already have that. I can, I can maybe help out on that, or work to let me know, and, uh, you know, we'll be talking to Ben, so you, both of you who know what's happening next, okay. Right, um, overall, I'd just like to say, first of all, um, thank you, um, to Jodie. I don't know if she's here at the moment, I think she's left the room. Um, she went to the Orton Towns Conference, uh, met me there as well. Uh, there were over two hundred businesses that represented at the meeting, uh, Friday two weeks ago. Um, and to be honest, I think we should have done a bit more, um, to try and get some more business groups there, uh, from both Biddle, uh, League. Uh, Chedle was quite well represented, uh, but other areas weren't, so I think that's something that we need to take into account. And it was all linked into the tourism strategy, there's a lot of money coming out of the central government at the moment. Uh, a new LVIP has been, uh, organized with us and Stoke City Council. And so there's an awful lot of potential funding there, uh, in the future. Plus, then I go on to the UK SFP, which is why partly they got the funding in the first with the LVIP, because of the success that we managed to get. From the UK SFP funding, and again, there at the board meeting we had, um, the applications that were coming in. Uh, from Biddle and from Chedle were not enough. We need more is coming in from Chedle and Biddle to take advantage of that money that is there at the moment. And I do think, regardless of where you're from or anyone else, I think we do need to work together to try and improve that if we possibly can. Um, I realise that's district, but nonetheless, it's something that links back to the Orton Towns Conference. Um, in terms of what's happening now, uh, lots of rearrangements have occurred within the children's services, as I'm so sure some of you are aware. The Family Improvement Board, of which I was a member, stalled for eighteen months, uh, because of rearrangements of staff and everything else. It's now back up and running. The first meeting was back in October, which I couldn't attend, the second one I attended recently. Um, that is taking part also, uh, there used to be a, a set of meetings called the locality meetings. Where various, um, organi- institute, well, within, within the, um, social care and within children's services, used to get together with the police. And then try and sort out various issues that were related to, to various families' areas, et cetera. Um, so that is now part of this area as well. They are trying to set up a database. Um, I didn't get that information until a few days beforehand, I did pass it on to my other county councillors. Uh, within the, I think, you were included in that, I hope you were anyway. Um, to look at the database of community groups that should be included within this remit. So if any of you would like to do that, I hope that, uh, that's something that I would like to try and make contact, uh, with Nigel and with Sarah. Try and make sure, don't miss out any groups. If any of you think that, that some groups are being missing on any of the database, then please let us know. Uh, in terms of, uh, health committee, uh, things are still going on with that. Uh, there was something that was sent out in relation to nine 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 called, like, Health Watch. Which is a, sort of a group that come and report to the health committee at the county council. Um, I wasn't really made aware of this until recently, when I kicked up a fuss at county council. Uh, so that was being sent out, so if any of you know anyone that's had some experience, please get onto that and make sure that's done. I think that goes until March the tenth. Um, there's also a working group and some meetings that we've arranged as well. I hope John and others will be able to attend all those meetings. Um, and that's to visit the emergency call centre, where we've handled this issue around defibrillators and everything else, I won't go into too many details, but all that's happening as well. Um, in terms of car parking, which is something that has been brought up beforehand, with petitions from the gentleman to my right. Um, I have set up and talked to the fishing, uh, group. Uh, I had a, almost a forty five week meeting with them, I was astounded with the amount of work that they do on behalf of the county council, the rangers and everyone else. And it's not just in Naively, it's across the whole of the region. Um, so I was very impressed with that, and I will be representing or presenting that information, um, uh, to, to the cabinet member. Uh, Victoria Wilson, uh, as soon as I can, and so hopefully then that will help her with the consultation. They've given me their specific requirements of what they need, um, uh, once the car parking is, charging has been able to, to change rather, to have some charging. Uh, but they know what they now want to be able to keep doing what they need to do, which was a very useful conversation, I must say. Um, in terms of, number six, I've lost number six, oh no, foster caring awards. If anyone knows of anyone with foster carers at the moment, it's something that I did go and see last year. It's a fantastic day out, and it's a way that we, um, make sure that people that, uh, that, that do some astounding work. Some of these people have been looking after disabled children, so after thirty five, forty years, it's a phenomenal thing what they do, some of these people. If you're aware of any foster carers or anyone else like that, again, please let us know, because the foster care awards are, uh, uh, for this year as well. Um, I do have, um, some information for Sarah, which I was going to be, Sarah Beach is the woman that you need to see in relation to the epidemiology. I know, uh, that, uh, councillor Garvey was involved in that as well, we found that very interesting, I did. Uh, and I think that would be great for writing reports and everything else, so Sarah Beach, I'll give you the details, I can't do it tonight, I'll give, I'll give you a text tomorrow or something. And let you know on that one. Um, eight, the culture and, uh, group strategy is going ahead as well. The reason I bring that up again, again, it's district, but there's an awful lot the county council are now doing under another community strategy, which would affect that as well. And so I've got some contacts there, so that will hopefully be linking up with that. Um, all the universal credit, uh, information's out there, just a very quick, there are three hundred and twenty more people claiming universal credit at the moment. Uh, and that means that we're still below the West Midlands average at two point nine percent. There is rings of more information on that one, if anyone wants, wants to see that, they're quite welcome to. Um, it is a long read, uh, shall we say, in the business. Uh, and then finally, I just wanted to say, and I was asked for a slight extension. Um, is that Mary from Connect Fiber has turned up this evening, do you want to stand up and just say hello? Uh, I think that's, that's it, that's all, it's okay, so, um. I don't think you're allowed to speak tonight, but you will be, hope to meet another meeting. So, apologies, um, I've talked to Mary tonight and suggested that she comes to another meeting, uh, which you can get your prepared questions for and everything else. Am I allowed to bring her in at this stage, dear, or not?
Yeah. Oh, sorry, no.
Okay, um, I wasn't aware she was here, um, just to let you know what they're doing at the moment, I say no. Okay, well, the reason that, the reason she's here tonight is that, um, Nike's, she's doing a lot of work and just got the contract for Nike for sleep. Um, and the rural areas, and they're putting in what is normally called, um, the new fibre connect systems coming up. It's fifty five times faster than super fibre, which is what's in there at the moment, uh, and it's particularly aimed at rural areas. And, uh, the only thing I can say is that I've had a few experiences of this before in my own area, and hopefully consultation. Which is what I believe she's here for tonight, if that's the case, is something that you need to undertake with all your residents. Because in some areas, there may be poles, there may be some, uh, footpath or anything else, I think, but Nigel might bring this up in his report. But basically, uh, they're digging up footpaths, including these cables in in some areas, because there's no connectivity there at all at the moment, particularly in the rural areas. So I think that's it, I'll shut up there and ask the questions and then sit down. That was ten minutes, yes, seven and a half minutes.
Informative and very brief. I must commend you on that one.
Thank you.
And I know that councillor Rogers has a question.
Well, it's just, I don't know what you say about the lady, as it's, I know it's not on the agenda. Just purposely come along, it's just purposely go to the bed and breakfast to come and speak to us, so I do feel sorry for you, but thank you for that.
So you now have actually been made.
Yeah, we'll do that then. I'm sure we didn't roll out, did we?
You can, you can put it to a vote if you'd like to, hear it speak.
Right, so we'll go and put it to the vote then.
Can I speak in the morning to the council, Mr. Matt?
Yeah.
Basically, we have a rule that states that on a Wednesday prior to a council meeting, if anybody wants to speak of public participation. It should let the chief officer know, and it should be on the agenda. This has not happened. I would like to hear what the late's got to say.
So we are.
But, basically, as far as I'm concerned, it puts herself on the agenda, she can come to the next meeting, or she can come and address us at committee meeting. But she's got to do it. What's the point of having rules if effectively you're going to break them? And I think if we do this, we leave ourselves as a council open to anybody walking and saying, I want to speak.
Yeah, that's an argument that, uh, I fully follow. Um, so, in that case, using the mayor's wisdom, such as it is, Mary, we'll see you again, duck. So in that case, using the mayor's wisdom, such as it is, Mary, we'll see you again, Doug.
Good luck.
Right, uh, any more questions for Keith? Any questions for Keith?
I didn't even do a DHP. Some issues around the FPI. Thank you.
Yeah, Nigel.
Thank you, Keith.
Nigel, you'll, you'll.
Three jobs have been done, thank you.
Yes, very briefly, I'll just, uh, rattle through these things. For those who don't know, there was a budget setting meeting at full council last week. And the council tax, uh, rise was set at four point, four point nine nine percent, which included a two percent social, uh, services premium. Which is, uh, fits in with the statutory guidance from central government. Uh, let's move an update on highways, uh, the comment which I will make is that, uh, obviously. All county councillors are very much aware of the state of the footpaths, never mind the roads. At the moment, there is implied, uh, planning permission for fibre broadband operators and a number of fibre broadband operators who are. Uh, installing broadband within the county of Staffordshire, which includes Biddles. They can affect it, they've got licence effectively to dig the pavements up without consultation or, or planning permission as such, because that's been done as a given. And as a consequence, it's very difficult unless it's an absolute desperate emergency to, to plan any. Footpath repairs, knowing that we potentially are going to be dug up at the moment's notice afterwards. So at the moment, there's a, there's a, a monitorium on of, of routine repairs and I am aware of a massive backlog of footpath repairs in Biddles. And I am aware that councils have been canvassing to get those footpaths done, so, uh, you know, we, we, we do what, what we can when we can, but it is a difficult situation. But a necessary evil if we are going to go forward with the super fast broadband, I'm afraid. And moving on to, uh, highways, pleased to report something which both myself and councillor Flunder have, have worked on quite specifically, as have many members of the public. The A five two seven in the Staffordshire County section before, as it approaches Stoke-on-Trent. Is down for a full, uh, surface planing and, uh, reinstatement commencing the nineteenth of February. So hopefully it is. My meeting, thank you. So hopefully it, um, will be done on all the potholes and damage, a lot of which started from utility repairs, which obviously aren't, you know, once they break the service, become a problem. So hopefully by the twenty second of February, we will see a significant improvement in that area. It is an area which floods a lot, it is an area which has not surface water runoff, so it has always been, been a difficult area, but. Perhaps this time, if they do, dig it out and do it properly, which is what's been programmed, we should see a significant improvement on that. The other thing with regard to county, something which I raised last week, and I had a meeting with the, with the cabinet member highways outside the county council meeting. Is that, uh, he's agreed to do a full review of the reporting, online reporting system. And also some benchmarking exercises with other county councils to see if we can actually make the reporting system a little bit more slick and a bit more efficient. As, as it is possible to stand with a mobile phone and do a report on the spot. It's actually very difficult, especially with passing traffic and things, because you're swapping between, finding post goes and whatever. And other councils have got a system that once you click on, on the map, it comes up with a location. And asks you to confirm the location and that's the, that's the position I would like Staffordshire County Council to be in. And after a meeting over lunch, I think we got an understanding that that's perhaps something which we should be looking at, so, uh, hopefully we can get that done. Um. Final thing on highways is I'm pleased to report that, uh, after a lot of adoring. Uh, I've had my surface dressing list for Biddles North Division for twenty twenty four. It's something I have canvassed for and I've certainly, uh, got a lot of suggestions for and I'm pleased to say that a lot of those suggestions have been taken up. Very briefly, this is, this is the list of surface dressing for twenty, uh, twenty, twenty twenty four. Uh, Conbalton Road from Grange Road to Meadows Way. Meadows Way, including roundabout reinstatement to the Al, to Aldi. It's, uh, no, at least that's the full length of Meadows Way, it's going to be completely surface dressed. Wolf Road, as a catch up from last year, because it was, um, there was no choice but to postpone it due to circumstances beyond the county's control. West Street Fairfax Close, Station Road, Paul's Road, Wedgwood Lane, Mau Lane. From the A five two seven to Wedgwood Lane. Sands Down Close, Linden Drive, Washington Close, Stanley Road, Sandy Road and Cecil Road. And Crossfield Avenue in, uh, now actually, which actually is, yes, it is my, thanks, it is my, which I think is quite, quite a win to be honest. Because the original expectation was it was just going to be the A five two seven and there wasn't funding to do the rest. So I think that is quite, quite a leap forward. And finally, unrelated, I did have representations from Biddles Ramblers about getting. Uh, onto the, uh, volunteering public liability policy for Staffordshire County Council, so that they can do small scale. And in some cases, quite big scale repairs on some of the footpaths, especially with regards to the styles. And I have a commitment from cabinet member Victoria Wilson, that ad hoc volunteering, as opposed to regular volunteering, which is like what happens at some of the vol, some of the, uh. Libraries which have gone over to where the voluntary sector, it's something which is being worked into the volunteering policy. So once that new policy is, uh, reissued, then we will have a system of being able to record. Individual adult volunteering teams for doing one off jobs and making sure that we're covered by the county council's insurance, which makes it a, a, a lot easier, a lot safer to do that. Obviously, there will be conditions attached, you know, like risk assessments and things, but that's, that can only be for, for good and proper reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Nigel, right, we've got councillor Jones and councillor Garvey.
You, Mr Mayor.
It's loud.
Please tell me, I didn't hear you say New Street.
I didn't even, you didn't even say New Street.
Did I? How can that have been overlooked, Nigel?
It hasn't been, it hasn't been overlooked, it's just that, uh, the money isn't out at this moment in time. However, we are very, very hopeful that what happened last year with additional funds for member initiatives are going, going to happen this year. And, uh, that will, from my point of view, if we've got, now we've got that list done, my priorities will be Grange Road. And Overton Road, which I consider as one, and there's, there's action going on there as we speak. And definitely New Street.
I mean, New Street rigid road is probably one of the worst stretches of road in this area and it's a main drag through to Leake.
With, with what, what, what?
You know the state of it.
I know the state and I'm not, I'm not making any excuses, but the.
Auburn has never been more ghastly than it is.
It, it's not on that list because basically the chunked down area, so, but, you know, the fact that I've got everything in green is unexpected. Pushing in the right direction, but what's this space? With these out of the way, it means that we can concentrate the fire on New Street and Grange Road, which to me are, have become the critical ones now.
Uh, councillor Garvey.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, just a very quick one, can you actually please send that, that list out to all the Biddles North councillors, please?
Yeah, thank you.
No, very councillor Hart.
Yeah, thank you. There's legislation for the, um, utilities, the, uh, broadband companies to dig up roads. Is that for adopted roads?
It's for pave, it's for pavements.
It doesn't include private roads?
I shouldn't think so, is it? We've, we've got the experts sitting there, but she can't speak. Let's wait till we get a presentation at the next round of the, this, uh, lady, if Mary can turn up and then you can ask her.
Right, okay.
Well, that's what I think.
Because I would be concerned, uh, because, because we've, we've had problems before with. People who, um, share a private road. So we find a utility company saying, we have the right to dig this up, and they don't.
Any other questions? Thank you, county councillor Yates.
I'm just hoping there isn't, Nigel.
Quickly move on. Few apologies, have we any apologies?
Well, it just touched the parks.
Tell the Russians, she was going to come today, but she's straight, a downward turn.
Councillor Chris Wood.
Absolutely, yeah. Any others?
The councillor Parks.
Yeah, we've got councillor Parks.
This is the only one we've actually received in advance of the meeting.
Sorry?
This is the only one we've received in advance of the meeting.
Councillor Parks, yeah. Yeah, we've got councillor Parks and so on. Thank you, councillor. Right, the next one is, um, declaration of interests. A to require any disposable pecuniary interests and dispensations. Please indicate if you have any of the councillor Rogers, councillor Rogers.
Yeah, it's just on the supplement, it's not a pecuniary interest, but I didn't, felt on the lantern store, which is the first offender of mine, thank you.
Thank you. Right, the next one is to declare any other dis, uh, disclosive interests. Andrew.
Uh, I am a member of Ward's partnership.
As I am, all right, thank you.
Um, he's a card voter, and then, so.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew, me as well. Um, I'm sure that as we go through the minutes, et cetera, proceedings, if we do, what it does jog, jog your memory, you'll indicate. Um, the next one is to the minutes, number eighty two. To approve and sign the minutes of the town council meeting held, excuse me, on Tuesday, the ninth of January, twenty twenty four.
Okay, if I could go through those minutes, uh, present in attendance. Sixty seven public participation. Sixty eight apologies. Sixty nine declarations of interest. Seventy, the minutes. Seventy one, mayor's communications. Seventy two, standing agenda items. Seventy three, to receive an update on outside body meetings attended since the November two thousand and twenty three meeting. Seventy four, to consider response in relation to the attached letter regarding the Paris Assembly. Seventy five, to concern, to confirm the results of the referendum for the neighbourhood plan and the neighbourhood development order and next steps. Seventy six, accounts and finance, which include expenditure over five hundred pounds. And expenditure of less than five hundred pounds. Approve supplementary accounts which are tabled at the meeting, again, expenditure over five hundred pounds and expenditure of less than five hundred pounds. And that concludes the minutes of the town council meeting. Need a proposal in a second.
Proposal second, please, councillor Garvey, propose second, councillor.
I can't, I'm sorry, I wasn't present.
All right, sorry, we need a second, councillor Proudlove.
Mind your fellow.
I'll go show of hands.
Show of hands, please. Thank you very much. The next one is to receive the minutes of the rec and amenities committee on Tuesday, ninth of January, twenty twenty four, over to you, sir.
In the absence of councillor Parks, who's in the chair, can I move those minutes, please?
Sorry.
So in the absence of councillor Parks, who is in the chair for that meeting, can I move those minutes, please?
Yes. Okay, I'm just going through them, uh, the meeting's held on Tuesday, ninth of January, two thousand and twenty four. Present in attendance, forty eight apologies, forty nine declarations of interest. Fifty, the minutes. Fifty one to receive an update on discussions in relation to the proposed garden of remembrance at Woodhouse Burial Ground. Fifty two to consider proposals in relation to the Trent Valley Way development. Fifty three, jobs for the lensmen, which is a standing order. And within confidential items, fifty four to consider land opportunities within the town, it's another standing item. So we've been moved, proposed by councillor Garvey, do you have a second?
Second for that, please. Must be one of you's been.
I second that.
Yeah, you can start it better, yeah. Show of hands, please. All right, thank you. The next one then is, uh, ooh, to receive the minutes of the planning committee, sixteenth of January.
Move those, chairman.
Okay.
So again, going through, present in attendance, fifty nine apologies, sixty declarations of interest. Sixty one minutes. Sixty two, standing, standing agenda item to consider any proposed sites for local listing. Sixty three to consider content of the neighbourhood planning training and the future of the working group. Sixty four, with new planning applications. Sixty five, to consider response to the Wildlife and Countryside Act nineteen eighty one. S, section fifty three, application to upgrade public footpath thirty one part and public footpath one O two, Biddles Town. Through a public ride away, an application was attached. Sixty six, to consider supplementary applications received since the agenda was created. Sixty seven, new decisions and notices received from the district council. And now item sixty eight to conclude for appeals. That's how they were questioned by.
Yeah.
I wasn't there, we need a second.
Yeah, show of hands, please. Thank you very much. Uh, to receive the minutes of the town, the committee, commit, uh, committee held on the sixteenth of January, twenty twenty four.
How many of those, please? It says she was chair, but I was chair.
Was that, uh, that's an amendment on the minutes then?
That's Charlie then, yeah.
Councillor Smith.
Sorry, councillor Smith, yeah.
So going through the minutes present, we just noted that amendment. In attendance, forty nine apologies, fifty declarations of interest, fifty one minutes. Fifty two to consider and approve the revised dementia, dementia action plan. Fifty three to consider a draft plan of town council events in twenty twenty four. Fifty four to consider options for film showings and projects in partnership with Film Hub Midlands. Fifty five to receive an update on Biddles Works Together research project, following the presentation to the group and to consider next steps. We then move into confidential items, fifty six was to receive a verbal update on the station road development. And that concluded the business for that meeting.
That was second, we've got a proposal, second, yeah, councillor Garvey. Right, show of hands, please, guys. Councillor Hall. Right, thank you. Uh, the next one is to approve and sign the minutes of the financing strategy. Councillor Rogers.
May I ask you to move those minutes, please, at that meeting?
Thank you.
So again, just going through them, present. In attendance. Sixty seven apologies. Sixty eight declarations of interest. Sixty nine minutes. Seventy, accounts matters. Seventy one to consider entering the Let's Celebrate Town Award. Seventy two to confirm details of county council funding received in twenty three, twenty four. Seventy three, policies which were attached, which were A, stress management policy, B, violence or work policy. C, review the anti-fraud, bribery and corruption policy. And D, to approve the reviewed data protection and retention policy. Item seventy four, standing, which was standing, uh, standing agenda items. A was to consider disposal of any assets. B was to confirm previous suppliers. And confidential item seventy five was budget and precept con, considerations. Section A to confirm committee budgets. Section B to consider the attached room hire benchmarking activity. Section C to confirm proposed fees. Section D to confirm precept requirements. Item seventy six, to approve the licenses for the land at Smokey's Way and the town hall frontage, details attached. Seventy seven, to consider the approach to risk management in advance of insurance renewal in February, two thousand and twenty four. And seventy eight, to receive a verbal update on discussions with, with local architects in relation to potential projects. Seventy nine, to consider a suitable contribution for the storage of the miners lanterns. And section eight was a series of quotations which were attached, fabulated. Section eighty one, staffing. And that concluded the meeting.
Thank you very much, councillor, second please, the, the miniature question, Dave.
Councillor Hall.
Second minute, yeah, thank you very much, show of hands, please. All right, thank you very much. Right, we'll move on now to the mayor's communications as well. First of all, uh, it's nice to be back, uh, bit of a. Thank you very much, yeah, you might regret it. Um, but no, uh, I have been following, uh, the council, believe it or not. Um, and I was very impressed really with Nigel, quite frankly, um, the way he stepped up to the plate and, uh. Perhaps I shouldn't say it, but I'm going to say it, you'll get my view. Um. Right, then, then the next thing is what am, what are my communication? Right, then the, then the next thing is, what am, what are my communications? Well, I've only got one. And that's this coming Sunday, I've got to go to an event which it's gonna be a bit spicy by all accounts, um, but I should do my very best. Um, the rest of the town, the rest of the mayors will be there. So I shall let the side down. Fully spiced up. At least, but thank you very much. And that's it, Gav. Councillor Jackson.
What do you think to, um, announce the, sorry, announce the, uh, charity race round?
Do you know what, Kev? You took a real dirty mouth.
Sunday the twenty-fifth.
Yeah. Sunday the twenty-fifth at what time in the morning?
Good morning.
Sorry?
I'm up about nine thirty. There's a fun run followed by a seven kilometer race. Ten kilometer race.
Okay.
Five kilometers.
I raise you five.
Yeah, so thank you for that, Kev. Uh, yeah, if we roll it for nine, nine thirty, uh, parking, I would imagine will be at a premium, to say the least. Um, I don't know.
Bus is provided by.
The bus is provided.
Reliable bus company, based on the fact.
It, it's just, what reliable bus companies is? It's any pressure, good on me. But thank you for that. So, um, that's, that's all I can say about mayor's cons. Um, if we can quickly move on to item eighty-four, which is standing agenda items, A, to receive an update for the management of the town council, what's that? Have we got any?
Uh, yes, just two brief pieces of information. So I think most of you will be aware that Citizens Advice have now relocated uh, to town hall. So they're offering their services on Mondays and Wednesdays, uh, from the rooms downstairs. So they have a drop-in service and people can make appointments. So we're really pleased to have that. It's a great result for us. Um, and, uh, just to say that I know we're working on a number of extended leases for our assets around town. There isn't any update on those at the moment, if I can.
Thank you very much for that. Um, good news, quite frankly, I'll say, but. Um, B, to receive an update on the health and safety activities.
We've been inducting councillor Holsworth into his deputy role.
A difficult, a difficult job, I think.
Um, and so we've, uh, spent a couple of days, well, hard days, um, touring our various facilities and discussing the logistics of that. I don't know if the councillor Holsworth wants to say something further on that.
I'm sure he will.
Um, no, but we've, um, yeah, there's obviously quite a number of different sites and activities that go on across the town. So we've, uh, we've thoroughly inducted the members.
I can't think of a better blog to do it, quite so, quite, quite, if you can. I don't know if you've worked well, Jim, sorry, love.
Yeah. I'll mention this on every agenda I post till we get some news from SMDC about this building. So no news yet about Raff. Good. Thank you.
You mean that is the standing. That's good. Right, the next one then is to, uh, do you want to speak, by the way, councillor?
He's a rascal. He's self-shocked.
We're getting thanks, no, no, it's unusual. Uh, to receive an update on the Biddleford Works Together project.
Um, I don't know whether councillor Salt also wants to say something on this, but we haven't had a meeting, uh, since the last town council meeting, but you've all got copies available of the fabulous research project that was completed by the community. So feel free to take that home and read at your leisure if you haven't that all ready. Um, we've been sending them out to, uh, as many partners as we can think of, either electronically or in this paper form. And, and if you think of anybody that you work with who you think we should send them to, um, please do give us a notion. We'll work out whether we already have sent them and send again if necessary. But it's a lovely piece of work.
It's truly, there's nothing wrong with it, Jill. It's having a photograph of me.
No, not.
That's a mess. They did that deliberately. Right, councillor, X and O, you're on the street.
Is that, sorry?
Sorry, go on, love.
Just because I mentioned that, yeah. Just to say that, um, this is a gift from me, is Jill Salt, not, not councillor Jill Salt, to build a town council, as is the pen.
Greatly received.
Go on then, right. Uh, yes, I'd like to say fantastic piece of work and congratulations to all involved. I have given a copy to the cabinet member for communities down at Staffordshire County Council. I've given a copy to the chief executive at Staffordshire County Council and also a copy to the member services team who are responsible for administering grants. So, uh, I've fly, flown the all flag as much as I possibly can at county and it, all I'm very impressed and all I'm gratefully received, so.
Yeah. And I, I think I'm quite right in thanking you on behalf of all the councils here. That's splendid bit of work you done though. Thank you very much.
Mr Mayor.
Councillor Jackson, sorry, Kev.
Um, Gemma, who's just been here earlier, um, perhaps there'll be another one that could possibly, because there's probably some synergy with the work that she's doing and the work that Biddleford Works Together is doing. Uh, I think one of the big, you know, the biggest part of this is, yeah, we've got the report is what comes next and what, what, you know, what the report actually brings back into Biddleford Works Together. That's, I think that's the important piece of work that needs to be looked at sort of as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, we move on to item eighty-five, receive an update on the outside body meetings attended since January.
Have we got any? Councillor Hall.
Councillor Hart.
Yeah, just to let you know, there hasn't been a meeting of Ward's partnership since, I believe it's due in March.
Yeah. Councillor Garvey.
Thank you, Chair. There was the, um, in the last month, it's been the AGM of Biddlefin Bloom, where a number of things were presented. Uh, we've yet to see the accounts, but there were questions regarding the memorial garden. I think most of these have always been forwarded to the, um, chief officer. But it was quite a successful meeting. The committee were re-elected, so they'll proceed, uh, in the coming year.
Very impressive, yes.
Councillor Jackson.
Just a question to councillor Hart, really, the, the partnership board that's coming up early, it's fairly soon, I think. Um, are you as a Biddle councillor allowed to vote on Biddle projects? I'm not talking anything personal to your land or anything, but, you know, generally, a project that comes forward for Biddle, are you allowed to vote as a Biddle councillor, but you're on there obviously as a district councillor? Just wondering whether you can.
I, I'm on there as a Biddle councillor, Mr Mayor, uh, so I can vote, um, on, on a project unless there's a conflict of interest.
I, I think, councillor, that was actually mentioned at the last, one of the last meetings that I attended there.
Yes.
Well, that's, and that, that was clarified then, but Andrew has, has, can I?
That's good news, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Rogers.
Yeah, it's just a quick update, uh, on the Staffordshire Parish Council Association. A little update, the new chief executive that was appointed not long ago, we decided it's not for him, so there's going to be another one appointed in the near future. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, uh, that's, that's a shame, that is. Here he is. Right, uh, moving on then to, has anyone got any questions on what we've just mentioned? Right, moving on to item eighty-six, to approve that councillor Early will become a member of the finance, uh, management committee, and that will be switched over with councillor Holsworth, become a member. Well, that was a quirky.
I can do.
Councillor Rogers.
Yes, thank you for that. He's just suggested that that happened so that, um, councillor Neil Early can work as the mark, not as the councillor Hall. That's the move, the switch.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
All in favour? Right, thank you very much. Uh, to approve the, item eighty-seven, to approve the town council will become a member of the financial inclusion group in North Staffordshire with a membership fee of fifty pounds that supports group events. Anybody's got a comment? Have you, Chair?
And all I'll say on this is that all the key players are members of the financial inclusion group. So it's really beneficial for us in town council to be around that.
Councillor, you proposing that?
Everybody.
Thank you.
Councillor Jones.
All hands, guys. Right, right, thank you very much. Um, item eighty-eight, to confirm, ooh, that license agreements have been received from Staffordshire Morgan's District Council for project at the Gillough Heath Station and for the town hall frontage.
That's all we need to do.
Okay. Um, eighty-nine, accounts and finance.
Can I just comment, please, Mr Mayor? Well done, chief officer, for navigating the maze. Which unfortunately is licensing agreements with other authorities.
We'll see what happens. Um, the next one is. Eighty-nine A, committee budgets twenty-four, twenty-five spreadsheet attached.
We can, if you're confirming the recommendations.
Yes. Can we confirm, well, you've heard Sarah, can, can you confirm that these are acceptable? Have we got no problem?
Yeah, so vote on each one individually, all together.
Ooh.
We did that?
Yeah, go on, mate.
Yeah, so section eighty-nine, accounts and finance, to confirm the recommendations from the finance, strategy and management committee meetings. Item one, and we'll take these votes, uh, individually, the committee budgets for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five with the spreadsheet attached. Would I have a proposer? Proposed by councillor Hall. Do you have a second, please?
Second, it's councillor Jones.
Levans, please. Asked.
Item two, the fees and charges for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, which is also attached, but I have a proposer, please, councillor Hall.
Can, can I just ask, Mike, ask a question? So these attached document spreadsheet weren't actually attached to the hard copy that was.
We've already had hard copies of them.
Already had this previously, okay.
I have reprinted it for you. They're on your list.
Yeah.
Right, so councillor Hart has proposed that we accept.
Second, please.
Second. Councillor Hall, will you? Vote in favour? Right, thank you very much.
Um, item three, the precept requirements for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five of four hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-five pounds based on a tax base of six hundred and, six thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight, uh, chargeable properties, I think that is. Proposed by councillor Hall, seconded by councillor Proudlove.
Just ask a question, Mr.
I mean.
Can I just ask, just for the, for clarity, again, people watching, I presume that's an increase, I, I'm.
It is. Um, four point seven three percent increase or two pounds ninety-nine per household per year.
Thank you. People are interested, that's why.
One with that one, two pound, how much are you?
Ninety-nine.
I heard you, I just wanted to re-.
Only reason, you don't know your reason.
Councillor Redford.
Yeah. I'm going to do it now before the vote's taken. Do we have the same situations we do have at the district council, that anybody who's so much in arrears with council tax should declare to not take part in the vote?
I, I wouldn't say so because we don't collect it.
Yeah. Just a point of clarification. That, uh, requirement is actually stated at county and county don't collect it either. It's only the staff, staffs more is collecting on behalf and distributing. Or at county, a statement is made by the presiding officer to say that anybody who's more than two months in arrears is not asked to declare that and is not able to, uh, to vote, so.
Maybe so. Uh, when we start your term of office, you, you approve a dispensation in relation to council tax setting that permits you as town councillors to, to do that. Um, absolutely, you can declare whatever you feel you need to do, but, but that's not a requirement as far as I'm aware.
We need to go, should, should, we've had a proposer, we've had a second, Chair, thank you. Oh, councillor Jackson.
I think, I think it's all worth just clarifying that one because it does seem a little bit strange at the county. I mean, I know years ago, if you were, if you were, um, a tenant of the council rent, you weren't allowed to vote on any rent increases at all, you weren't allowed to vote at all. So just to clarify whether, whether we do need to declare, I don't know. Years, but, um, if somebody was, happened to be in breach of it and they didn't realise as a town councillor that uh, it could put them in, it's actually, it's law or unlawful, I think, to actually vote on it if you are two months in, in arrears with council debt. So just to clarify that we either do need to declare it or we don't, that's.
Very unwise to vote on it, I would thought.
It's open to quiet, I was.
Yeah, let's go for show of hands, please, if we accept. Right, thank you very much. Uh, managed to keep moving, eh? Prove the insurance requirements for twenty-four, twenty-five.
So, uh, accounts and finance, eighty-nine, section B, to approve the insurance requirements for twenty-four, twenty-five based on assessment of risk quotations to be tabled and the overarching risk assessment has been attached. Now, I presume that's everything in this document here.
Yeah, so, um, this is the, the A three document is the one that you have somewhere of every year. We have reams and reams of pages of individual risk assessments attached to each and every one of our activities. I try and pull these together for you to, um, provide an overview for when you consider and insurance, uh, issues that you might feel that we need additional cover for. Um, on the additional, uh, document that I've put before you this evening, uh, we've had two quotations back by the time of the meeting. Um, the middle one that's on, uh, your documents, at the point of being asked for a quotation, you noted that they were nowhere near being protected last year and you suspected they wouldn't be this year. So I suspect that means that's the reason why they have a quotation, but you'll see that our full provider is by far the cheapest provider and I can advise there are no issues as far as I'm concerned.
Richard. Thank you. Second. Councillor Hawley. All right.
By councillor Hall.
Proposed. Seconded. Stick a vote, please. Right, thank you very much.
Uh, eighty-nine, accounts and finance, item C, to confirm the recommendations from the finance, strategy and management committee, meeting the financial regulation, which is also attached, should be amended to include internet banking arrangements.
Uh huh.
Great.
Right, seconded. Dave again.
So councillor Hall moved it, councillor Hall is seconded.
All in favour? Right, thank you.
And again, eighty-nine, accounts and finance, item D, to approve that one thou, one hundred thousand pounds will be transferred from NatWest to Unity Bank to enable internet banking to commence.
Councillor Garvey. You're proposing that, proposing that.
Um, thank you. Just based on this, I think we need to do something in terms for audit purposes. So we've got here that we're approving hundred thousand pounds to be transferred, but on the to be paid, so I know they haven't yet been paid, but on the to be paid, we've got the hundred thousand pounds there, which is fine because it's to be paid and it hasn't been paid. But what that means is that potentially, what would be asked to do tonight is a theta company in the agenda item that comes next. And I'm not sure I sit comfortable with that from an audit purpose. Is there any way that in these accounts, moving forwards, we could highlight something that could be announced at council before it ends up on here? Because it, it kind of seems to the public like it's already happened because it's on here and we're definitely going to propose it. Does that make sense? Absolutely. So if we could just. So I think what, the way to do that going forward is to have a separate section, subject to approval. Yeah, great, thank you.
More proposed payments. Nigel, you. I was just going, proposed payments. John. Subject to approval is probably fine.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just, just a quick question, we, we, you're showing a hundred grand across.
Yeah.
Are we keeping a presence with NatWest then? We, we are keeping an account with NatWest. We're moving money so we can do business, basically. We can make a place for us.
Both.
Eat more easily. So, but we keep, we're keeping an account with NatWest.
So the section.
And I wasn't at that time.
No, it's fine. So no, that's, that's, that's fine. So, um, so the financial regulations we've amended for now.
Yeah.
And whilst we try and kind of find our feet a little bit, we're. So that we can hold money in because we still get quite a lot of cash checks, um, which aren't always acceptable at post office or, you know, you know, you need to pay things in more quickly than that. Um, so we, for now, certainly we'll keep that presence in NatWest and then we're kind of. Yeah, we, we, we agreed at the, at finance meeting that we, we need to come up with essentially a process for that. We're just not sure how that works yet until we get into it and everybody understands their different roles with approvals and kind of.
Andrew, I think you proposed it, didn't you?
Councillor Gordon proposed.
I'm sorry, councillor Garvey, you seconded it. A vote in favour, please? Oh, whatever. Right, thank you.
Uh, again, on eighty-nine, accounts and finance, section E, to approve accounts to be paid, thread row two thousand and twenty-four.
F is your supplementary.
It is a query of going.
And we'll, we'll, we'll also sort of take F at the same time, which is to approve the supplementary accounts.
We'll take, is it two, uh, two separate ones?
Next.
Yeah.
Yes, a couple of, um, quick, quick questions I've made. Let's cut a couple of, um, quick, quick questions of a may. Um, one is, it's, it's, sorry, uh, it's to be handed the visitor centre. Because we've got accounts to be paid. Forty, yeah, once for January, and this one's for February. Once for eight, eight hundred and twenty four pound, that's, but, yeah, that's, that's. That's February, isn't it? Yeah, and also in February, which is the one with, in town council minutes. That is five hundred and sixty two pound, is that, I'm, I'm a bit confused at which is which. And I think secondly, uh, when you look at eight hundred and twenty four, it's, 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 it's over, it's over half. Electricity bill for this building. If that's only for, for a month, then I think we seriously have got to look at that, because that is. That is a lot of money that we are paying into the business down there, and we really need to look at that, and that has got to be. Very, very high on our agenda to get that electricity bill down, because that is, that is a lot. But could you just help me with which is which?
Page are we looking at, Kevin, sorry?
I've got, I've got the page that, um, has been handed out as the town council for tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the stockwoman that was handed out, that was on that, on the table.
Right.
Got two different amounts of money for that. And I'm, I'm a bit confused about where we are, what are we, I'm up in a different month or?
Yeah, I know Kevin, uh. Sarah's working on that one now.
Well, Sarah's had a look at that one, um. On the, again, the town council minutes one, the chartered instance of housing membership renewal, a few hundred and ninety four pound. It's one I, I can't remember ever sort of seen before, but I probably missed it, but what do we actually get out of that one? Well, can I ask? What we actually get out of it?
Let's do which, which can be.
Do the first one first.
Second one, sir.
Ninety four, it's, oh, David. Twenty ninety four, it's, so that one. Remember the ninety four, the one before you?
Um, yeah, the one to ninety four, yeah. Obviously, it's an organisation that we're, we're a member of, it's only what we get out of, but I can't remember it coming up before.
I'll ju, I'll need to check with the octopus one, because the five, six, two figure is the, is the clearly. Then there was a bill between that, that was the assembly bill, which is, which is a seven hundred and figure. And then the eight one is January.
I think it might be useful to have read a monthly breakdown of the visitor centre for electricity.
That's fine, shall we refer that to ban?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Is that all right, Sean?
Yes. Um, that'd be good, yeah. Councillor Jones.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to put a bit of flesh on the bone on the visitor centre, what I know about you, I mean. The, the bills are a bit, I walk in, I agree, uh, but the problem with, what the problem is, we don't know how much of that electricity. Been used by the capital, and how much has been used to heat the water, because the toilets and the lights and the service lights outside. I know Sarah's, uh, got a project I'm going to, to sort out and meet her for this. And it's something that's got to be done urgently, but, and it, but it is in train, and as soon as we can do that. Because we, we do need to revisit the, uh, the track with the, with the tenants.
Yeah.
So we know exactly what their consumption is, it's difficult to, um. To decide what, what the, the revised term should be, so it, it is in hand, and I agree that they're not quite high, it's, it's a very inefficient building. Anyway, um, but I think, uh. I think that those builders being generated by the capital is, is in misconception, I think.
Yeah, that's fair, that's fair.
Right, yeah, councillor, what's your name? Nigel, go on then.
Yes, just picking up on, on the visitor centre, I'm very much aware that we've got an environment group, I'm the climate change group meeting. Tomorrow, and I think the decarbonisation, which effectively is the intercooperation, if the. Renewals into that visitor centre is absolutely critical, and these figures actually show it up, and I think. If, as soon as we get the licence sorted out, then, you know, we, I think we're all pretty. Where that it becomes a priority to look at whatever decarbonisation grants, and there are. A large number of them, and see what, what we can do, uh, because that's into his work to do. Through the county, we have sponsored, uh, and granted money for double glazed windows, which will help, and, but there's obviously an awful lot. More to do, and there's a lot of scope to do it, but I think what they do is, is focus the mind very much on that, it's got to be a significant priority for this, uh. For this council, because not only does it. Help us with the climate, uh, danger mitigation targets, it also helps, obviously by saving a considerable amount of money.
I, I think, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I think you're absolutely right, and I think if, if once we've got the, the list sorted out. If we could find a way to cut some solar panels on that roof, the battery in the back, we could probably, these, those would probably evaporate, no?
We're going through that one.
Uh, yeah, the question about the chartered instance of housing, have we got, do we have?
Yeah, so you pay that every year, that's a special one for, for me, which he.
Oh, to you, right.
Which he decided he'd keep going while the plan was ongoing, so, um, you can take a view on that in forward, obviously.
I think, yeah, I'm, I'm quite happy if, if Sarah thinks it's something beneficial and still the town council are getting. Something worthwhile out of it, and I'm quite happy that men, uh, that, uh, our chief officer stays a member of it, but. Um, I'm sorry, I, I haven't spotted that before, that's all.
It comes once a year, sir.
That's fine, you'll meet.
Coming up, proposal second. Andrew. Seconded, councillor Jones. Actually, move on, please. Thank you very much, we'll move on now to confidential items. Um. Right, it's number ninety. Oh, yeah. Right, uh, this is the bit where we part company from, uh, the folks who are watching this on YouTube or whatever device. So, uh, all I can do is thank you very much for taking the time and the trouble and making the effort to watch us.